All right, good morning.
What's the next group?
Welcome everyone to our Acheson County special meeting for February twenty eighth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our new business item today, um, we are going to review the documents and sign them um to execute the sale of Acheson Senior Village. That is set to close on Friday, March first.
Check on that.
Yeah, however, we're waiting on the county counselor because he has the documents, so. Maybe a brief fold. Oh, I think I hear.
Other voices.
Nope, different voice, sorry.
Your call has been forwarded to voicemail.
Okay, well, we'll wait.
Yes, Pat there at this time, this is Dr. Eavis.
Uh, now he had a meeting that he's.
Okay, that's the meeting, that's the meeting I'm in, so we'll just wait for him. Yeah, why don't you know he got held up, he's alright, thanks. Sounds like he's in trance. So the meeting Monday night is a special meeting and we will. And everything for the road meeting. Township meeting. Correct, I mean. There it is. There he is. Uh, what time was it, six? Six. Yeah, tonight sounds good.
So you guys are going to. My day much work?
Yeah.
Do we know uh turnout on that yet? Do people in town just let us know if they're coming or not?
Um, so I made sure to remind all my, I think all of mine are going, but usually everybody shows up, it seems like, at least one representative from every town.
I was their last, just don't want to do it, so make sure we have a turnout.
Yeah, and um Rodenbridge always coordinates that they send invite information, so they might have a head count, but.
Yeah, most of them turn out this. We already started the meeting, let me get organized. Thank you. So long update. So long update.
Oh, you were due, maybe that's.
It might be where you were having a lot of issues with it.
Actually, mine's due for it too. That might be why mine was acting up yesterday. My yellow just popped up. So like right here, if you see a, this little orange dot. That's usually it in that way.
I've got an orange dot. So that's all that, it's mine's words, I'm not gonna mess. G cap meeting today for adults. So I have, I have more updates on how it's going. Where do they have them, so? The meetings, uh committee corrections, yeah, and uh. This is bringing in some kind of light lunch stuff, we go from eleven thirty to one thirty. Um, so the folks involved, it's gonna show a little later, leave a little bit, that kind of gets everybody mental. If the adult ones, which is just here, these guys are so adult, we have that joint juvenile, so that's when they go back and forth. They do that, they're either. Yeah, we're still going back and forth and just don't have a lot more people showing up. We're working on that though.
I'm on Mac though, somebody's not the same problems. Yours.
Being troublesome.
I think it's just going through its startup.
Well.
So, well, first of all, the settlement statement that came yesterday afternoon, I don't know if everybody looked at that.
Yeah.
It does not show the uh. The payment to SLIB.
Well, I noticed that, but I assumed it was gonna be something that they dealt with.
Or, or does it, I guess it does. I'm not familiar with this format.
I thought there was.
We're on the left side.
Gotcha.
Oh. I'm just hanging up, I was just living on the right.
Casey, this is probably your area of expertise.
So it looks, it looked fairly, I mean, not knowing what that particular title company charges for their closing fees, I mean, but nothing looks out of line. Um, and you know, they have some additional fees for archive fee and different things, but. I mean, yes, nope, you're fine, right here, so it just shows. We're selling it for one million six hundred, the commission's right here, um. Owner's title policy. Um, which that number is based on the sale price, um, and then the deed recording fee. Title messenger fee, so some of these fees, like the local title companies here don't charge like archive fee, some of those, but it is what it is, I mean, this is not a local title company, so um. I didn't see anything that stood out to me as a red flag.
Yeah, I looked at that yesterday.
And then this is what we will get for proceeds down here, one million four ninety-eight, one twenty.
And that's after SLIB?
Yes, it's right here, yep. SLIB is the ninety-six thousand.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, you're, yeah, no, you're fine.
And I looked at that yesterday, but as we're discussing it, I want to see what you're. Talking about.
Yeah. I mean, do you agree, Pat, that's? Everything.
Yeah, yeah, um. Now that I see it, I wasn't. Familiar with that format, but it. Yeah, I, I don't even know what an archive fee is, that was one of those.
Yeah.
The bane of con- consumer transactions, it's only forty dollars, thirty dollars, so why worry about it?
Sixty bucks and it's split, it looks like, yeah.
There it is, a. Assignment and assumption of resident trust funds. I think, you know, it, it. Was that shared, have you seen that, was that shared with you?
Yeah, you talked about that before. The United Resilience has said, yeah, for their. Expenses, whatever, miscellaneous.
Right. It's their agreement to, to take those over and.
Assignment assumption, yeah, you sent it to us on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, so there's two of those to be signed. And there's a bill of sale. To be signed, and those are all in accordance. The documents that were, the forms that were circulated at the beginning. So.
Do you have hard copies of those printed out, or do you want me to print them?
No, I like. You, I do not have copies printed out.
Okay. Um, yeah. Do you have a preference on front and back, or do you just want? I haven't pulled up, I can tip print, I just.
I, I don't, um. I don't have any preference. I don't know. I, I probably not use front and back.
I do see.
If there is a problem, then.
And if you have to scan them, it's sometimes easy to have it. Okay, so I'll just. One-sided. Okay, so I'm printing assignment and assumption of resident trust funds. The settlement statement.
How many copies do we need?
Probably two, if you want an original bed.
Okay.
Set that, but we're not going to physically be at the closing, so I guess we thought we only need one, because they'll be looking at these.
Yeah, they'll send us though.
Did you print the settlement statement?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna print that, I have them pulled up here.
Yeah, if you want.
The bill of sale.
We had talked about having, we'll need the. Having. Someone, some. You were a little concerned about signing everything, you thought all three commissioners should sign it, I can change the warranty means, so all three sign.
That's not good. So if you want to print that when you get it amended, and then I have all the other ones printed for us. Thank you.
The thing that they had suggested is dated March first, which is the, the closing date. Can I leave it that date, or do you want? We're signing with the twenty-eighth. Yes, I need to think that.
You put a date down by the signatures? Does it matter that much?
It doesn't matter, yeah. But we're signing at the twentieth day of February, so.
Okay. I want to look at those before.
Matter of color equal use.
It doesn't.
You also sign on the last, or just you sign it, I'm fine if you sign it, just to ask them.
Okay. I mean, we can all just. We can all just sign it, it's fine.
So is this facility gonna be ran as Ensign Group or Airheart Healthcare? Yeah.
Well. Yeah, there, there's, Ensign Group is the owner of both Amelia Healthcare and. I don't remember, Amelia Healthcare and Amelia Health Holdings. Uh, so, Airheart.
Airheart, yeah.
Um. With the deed.
I think it's like an umbrella, that's right, so Ensign purchased the property and then their LLCs are created to.
Operate.
To operate, and maybe one of the LLCs is for the real estate, one's for the business.
That's what I think it is.
Yeah, that's how I think they, yeah, they set it up.
With that deed.
Mm-hmm, I was gonna ask you if you want to enter.
There are copies, there's two.
Yeah, there's another operating one, and then the.
Settlement statement too.
These were the, yeah, those were.
The bill of sale, the two assumptions, and then deed and settlement statement, okay.
Now, I had also prepared that resolution, I, it's, I will be shocked if there's not some other document that they say, oh. Right, what about this? So I, I think it might make sense still to have the resolution authorized. Was there any, someone designed?
Was there any documents related to transfer of medical records?
Well, that's part of the. The operating transfer agreement.
Okay, there's not, they were separate.
It's part of that.
Is a bill, okay, because when I've dealt with some stuff like that, they have separate thing, they incorporate it, that's fine, if. We need a motion. Just send all the documents, or do we need separate motions?
I, yeah, I, I don't think it matters, they shouldn't be fine. The, the resolution that I had circulated, I still think that might be a good idea, because I think there may be some. Some other. Form that is relatively minor that they may want.
Did we already sign their solution?
No, we did not.
Oh, okay, so you put that out to you.
Yeah.
Good, there's no harm in having it, right?
No, and I, I mean, I think there's some benefit of having memorialized, and it's in a public place, and it's. Public, publicly accessible.
One question on the, a warranty. That the consideration of some of ten dollars.
Which is, I think it says ten dollars and other valuable consideration, and that's just uh. Frequently used, so that the purchase price is not. Publicly disclosed, it doesn't have to be, of course, in ours it is, um, I don't know from an accounting perspective. What they are allocating to real estate, what they are allocating to personal property, and it doesn't make much difference to us. So one point six million dollars is the total purchase price, and I, I did receive a. Notification that that has been received by the closing agent, they have, I think there was sixty thousand dollars. And then the balance was there, um, but it, it wouldn't be wrong to. Have that be accurate as to what the total amount is, but. The one point six million includes not only the real estate, which is what's. Transferred by the deed, but also includes personal property and uh. Blue sky of the business. So I don't know what that, this is not incorrect, um. And I don't think it's particularly misleading, um, although. There is something to be said for having everything out in the open, but some portion of what they're paying is for the real estate. But then some portion is for. The other assets that have been transferred, so I don't know how you bring that.
Taxes you do it, so, yeah, that's what I've dealt with before, so you might allocate certain amounts to certain things.
Okay, so you guys are good with it saying ten dollars?
Yeah, I guess for your standard.
Okay. Um, so I would look for a motion to, um. For all of us to sign the documents set forth for the sale of Senior Village, um, scheduled for. Friday, March first, twenty twenty-four, um, the documents as presented from the county counselor, the special warranty deed. Assignment and assumption agreement for the operating contracts, assignment and assumption of residence trust funds. The settlement statement. And the bill. Of sale. Who have a motion to allow us to sign these final documents for the sale.
So moved, say it.
Good, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Will you just sign them in eight here?
Yeah, or beside me is fine.
Should be, oh.
Sorry. No, you're fine, I know, it knows you didn't see it there. Stop it to back up, and what number do you want that one to be, um, I'm showing twenty twenty-four, fifteen thirty-six, but I'd like to confirm with that on that.
Fifteen thirty-six.
I want to make sure they were still on. Okay. It's probably important that I read this one, uh, resolution, I would look for a motion to approve. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen thirty-six, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas. Authorizing the sale of Acheson Senior Village. Whereas KSA nineteen dash one oh one, as amended, authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to transact all county business. And to perform the powers of local legislation and administration, it deems appropriate, including selling and conveying any real estate owned by the county. And whereas Acheson County Resolution twenty twelve dash fourteen hundred sets forth the methodology for disposing of surplus property owned by the county. All is authorized by KSA nineteen dash two eleven B, and whereas Acheson County has operated Acheson Senior Village. A skilled nursing facility licensed located at fourteen nineteen North Sixth Street, Acheson, Kansas for many years. And whereas, after careful consideration, the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas. Has determined that the sale of Acheson Senior Village is in the best interest of the residents of the facility. As well as in the best interest of the citizens of Acheson County. And whereas, on or about January ninth, twenty twenty-four, the board executed an operations transfer agreement with Airheart Healthcare LLC. And also executed an asset purchase and sale agreement with Amelia Health Holdings LLC. For sale of the facility for a total price of one million six hundred thousand dollars. And whereas, all conditions under the said operations transfer agreement with Airha- Airheart Healthcare LLC. And the asset purchase and sale agreement have been satisfied, and the parties are now ready. To consummate said sale, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas as follows. The Board of County Commissioners authorizes the sale of Acheson Senior Village, including the associated real property and all of the other assets pertinent. Therefore, for the total purchase price of one million six hundred thousand dollars, all as set forth in the operations. Transfer agreement with Airheart Healthcare LLC. And the asset purchase and sale agreement with Amelia Health Holdings LLC. The Chairwoman of the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson. Kansas is authorized and empowered to execute, affirm, and sign any documents required in connection. With the after said sale adopted and approved, okay, so. So I have a motion to approve this resolution as read.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Passes. Three to zero.
I think that's, I, I think that's all with relation to. The sale of Senior Village. I need to get done, um, I. Kind of expect there to be a, a bevy of communication about it, I've been expecting it, but uh. Didn't come Monday, which I was expecting, and didn't come yesterday, so. I, I'm sure there will be some other thing that needs to be approved as part of this, but. But anyway, um, I will give. Um, is Michelle here? Yeah, so we'll need to get these uh attested, and uh. I, are you a notary?
I am.
Oh, great, okay, I, I'm a notary as well, but my notary stamp is at my office.
My stamp's in the office.
Yeah, so great, so we can, yeah.
I can do it.
Okay.
Okay.
As far as publicity on this, um, could we find out?
Yes, I believe Ensign had, um, well, uh, Mark contacted the media and let them know, but Ensign, when they were here, was gonna write the press release, um. So Eric and I are planning to attend the midnight celebration, um.
I guess I will call in.
Yeah.
I can do FaceTime, maybe or something.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that, that would be good.
I'd do that there.
Okay. Um, so anyway, we can have an update, um, with them on, you know, that, and they'll probably want the press release after they take. Ownership, I'd assume, with some, you know, info based on that celebration, so.
Okay, so what time should I be contacting, I guess I'm calling you, or should I call somebody else that's gonna be there?
So we are planning on to go up there an hour ahead of the transition, so we'll be there around eleven P M, but the cele- the reception celebration is gonna be at midnight, so probably around midnight, we'll. Call.
Okay, you can just send you in the corner, I mean, it just brought me up somewhere, and I was watching. Text, you know, it'd be like, if we know more that night, we could say. Yeah. Um. Approximately ten tel or something like that.
Yeah.
Or.
Alan, I'll be there too, so if you wanna coordinate with me, so we're not in any problem.
That might be better, Mark, yeah, because I think Casey's gonna be right in the middle of everything. Yeah. Okay, I'll, uh, I'll be calling you late.
Sounds good.
I'll wait till about a quarter till or so.
And I was just gonna let you guys know, Brian is on, Brian Hagan with the news.
Oh, nice.
He is on.
Thank you, Brian.
See the, to see that, I think, come to fruition a little bit.
Yeah, we're excited, it should be fun celebration at midnight, so change of hands and positive things to come, so. Alright.
Uh in unrelated news, the tax sales yesterday, we had thirteen parcels that sold. Every parcel sold, we didn't have any that didn't sell, which is the first one we've had where we didn't have a debt on something. Uh total of all thirteen parcels was thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars. So.
Great.
Successful sale.
So start out with two hundred and fifty that we're in arrears, right, roughly?
Well, yeah, uh when we, by the time we went to abstracting, we had about eighty. And I think there were sixty-seven when we filed, and down to thirteen. By time of sale. We've I started with identifying properties for the next, for the next sale, so.
Speaking of unrelated, were you able to get the A A E D C contract updated at all? Or your timeline on what that looks like since the city commission meets Monday?
Yeah. No, i- i- it's the the things that we talked about, and. I did not get that sent to to Larry, but I will have it sent to him today.
Perfect.
There was any more discussion you wanted to have about it, we could have an executive session about it now, but.
Uh that may be a good idea.
Okay.
Yes, just ten minutes next.
Bernie Klein.
Alright, I have ten minutes, just us three.
And Meltner. Yeah, for sure.
Are you ready? I'll move the board of county commissioners, recess an executive session. At ten thirty-two. A M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, is allowed by. KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B two, and that's the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in. Ten? Is it ten of them? Oh, yeah. Ten minutes uh in the commission room in the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, county counselor, and the finance director.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Director, and they were thinking they're gonna go with interim director for a year.
Oh.
Before they. Find a permanent one.
We are back in open session, any other business that we need to talk about before, if not, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero, we will adjourn at ten forty-three.